As the premier community in Hampton Roads, James City County strives to maintain a high quality of life for all citizens through sound fiscal management and legislative actions. In an ongoing effort to increase transparency, your Board of Supervisors holds public meetings to garner citizen input before making important decisions. Here's tonight's meeting agenda. Stay tuned. The Board of Supervisors meeting will begin shortly.
Call this meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors to order. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Porter. How are you?
Thank you.
If you'd please call the roll.
Starting from our far right, Mr. McGlinnan. Mr. McGlinnan represents the Robbins District.
Yes.
Mr. Eisenhow. Mr. Eisenhow represents the Jamestown District and is vice chairman of the board. Ms. Sadler represents the Stonehouse District.
Yes.
Mr. Hippel represents the Powhatan District.
Yes.
And Ms. Larson, Berkeley District and chair of the board.
Thank you. Here. Tonight, we will have a moment of silence followed by our pledge of allegiance. We will be led in our pledge by Phoenix Aguilar, a sixth grade student at Berkeley Middle School. Phoenix enjoys playing soccer, football, basketball, and street hockey. He also enjoys drawing and playing video games. Phoenix is a member of the Berkeley Middle School Band and participates in the Rec Connect program through Parks and Rec. So if you'll come up and then we'll have a moment of silence and then if you'll lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you would like, if you could come up here, please. Thank you so much. And here is the certificate in the James City County. Thank you. With that, we will have public comment. Thank you. Our first person is Jay Everson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. I'm Jay Everson, 103 Branskin Boulevard. I have four quick items I'd like to talk about. During the course of these work sessions, the issue of tax equalization between cities such as Williamsburg, counties such as James City County came up. And of course, this board, as Senator Normant pointed out, the last five years has put on their legislative agenda, I've got to think that it was unanimously approved, to allow counties like James City County to have the same taxing authority as the city of Williamsburg. And that's all well and good. Problem here is that you want the taxing authority without the obligations and responsibilities that the cities have that the counties don't, which is maintenance of the roads. And I just do not understand how we would want to have taxing authority and then absorb the obligations and responsibility for our roads. Second point. During the course of one of your work sessions, the issue about state funding came up, in particular reference from Mr. McGlinnan to the car tax. Now, 20 years ago, the car tax was repealed. If you remember, back then, the car tax was due on the 5th of December with Christmas on the 25th, 20 days before Christmas, they had to pay the car tax. And this was a pretty big burden on people who were less fortunate than you or I. And I do remember back then being challenged to pay this. And the fact that they're putting a billion dollars, this money benefits, the greatest benefit comes to people who are less fortunate than us. Either their tax is wiped out or it's nominal. And the one thing I can never understand, on liberal progressive Democrats in particular, is that always want to help the little guy, the poor. The car tax does that, but apparently compassion only goes so far. The third issue, I've been hearing some words about the PDRs coming back, purchase of development rights. In its essence, that's where normal people like us here in this room today transfer money to rich landowners to purchase their property. It's a transfer of money from normal people to large landowners. Now, I got to tell you, you know, they get to keep their land and they get the money. And it's like they get their cake and eat it too. And I always thought the liberal progressive Democrats believed that we should have the money go from the rich to the poor, and this is exactly the opposite. I guess compassion has its limits. Last but not least, on page A11 of your budget, where you're not going to prove this part of it tonight, there is a section there about strategic plan, God, what's the word? It's, you know, fiscal responsibility. And in that fiscal responsibility, which Ms. Mellon has talked about here on the PowerPoint, touted it, and at the two town halls, it was touted, the two cent reduction in the property tax. It's considered fiscally responsible, is what the budget, A11, says. Now, I know over the course of years that I've come here, that a lot of people compliment the staff with their hard work, their diligence, their foresight, and I've never disputed that. I've disputed what they work on, but never disputed their hard work. I think it's ironic that here we are with a proposal to cut the taxes for the people because of this windfall of money. And they went out and plugged this to the community, and apparently, four of the five of you are going to basically throw them under the bus and spend the money. So much for the fiscal responsible portion of the strategic plan. I thank you for your time.
And just so there's no misunderstanding, we do have tax bills due June 5 and December 5, so I don't want anybody to not... Thank you. Lynda Rice. Just want to make sure everybody pays their due on June 5.
Good evening. Lynda Rice, 23, 94 Fort Road. I hope all of you received the comments, kind of like a one-page attachment that I'd sent the board, I believe it was yesterday, reference my topic tonight, which is bring back PDR. Interestingly enough, Mr. Everson and I don't quite agree on the way these funds are being transferred and for what purpose, but that's okay. We're allowed to do that in this great country. I'm not going to read to you all of the comments that I made in that attachment that I sent to you, but I did want to bring up a couple of points, and these points really do get at money. Because we were, the county was very fortunate for many years to have a PDR program, and I actually sat on the PDR committee for a number of years when we drew up an ordinance and that type of thing, which gave forth the guidelines in terms of what the property owners could do if they entered into the program. And I want to emphasize again to people sitting in the audience, this is a voluntary program. No one in the county is forcing anyone to participate in the purchase of development rights program, which essentially is providing an incentive, if you will, for the landowners to consider at least putting some of their holdings into conservation easements. But at any rate, one of the, a couple of things that I wanted to mention with regard to funds. Currently, we have a little over $366,000 in the PDR account. I got this from Ms. Mellon, and this evidently was carryover from when PDR was in fact active. So there is a reservoir, even though it's small, of money there to, I'm going to say, bring back PDR. The other thing that has occurred is that we did have about $307,000 from the Commonwealth. That was through VDAX, I believe. And that money was there for the county to utilize, I think there was a three-year period, if I'm not mistaken, that the county could use that money coming from the Commonwealth, but they would have to match it. So that's money that has since disappeared because we were having, we'll say, some financial deliberations and we had a debt that we were trying to draw down. So that money kind of went back to the Commonwealth. But nevertheless, I would imagine some of those funds could be reapplied for. So that might be a second source of some money to bring back PDR. A third possibility, and I'm not as versed in this as I'm sure you all are, but I know we have our tourism sales tax that is, at least I think, is going to come down to the greater Williamsburg area as a result of Senator Normant's action. And depending upon, I guess, what happens with the Commonwealth's budget, which I know is not finalized yet, it's a possibility then that there might be some funds that can be extracted from that source to help with the re-establishment of PDR. Now, this is probably where I, some people are going to disagree with me. I do live on Forge Road. Every time I get up here, I'll say, Forge Road is the most beautiful road in James City County. If you haven't come up to either walk on it, drive on it, cycle on it, hike on it, or ride a horse on it, you're missing something. But with that said, it is a road that is in some jeopardy. And why I say that is because some of our major landowners unfortunately have passed on, and so their heirs are looking for options, options rather than just simply residential development. I'm not here to tell you that PDR is the 100% answer to help those landowners, who I might add are not rolling in great wealth, okay? But nevertheless, it would provide a possible mechanism for them to at least put in conservation easement some of their land. And the final thing that I would say about PDR, having served on that committee, is that process really needs to be streamlined. One of the reasons that some of the landowners did not participate is the process was extraordinarily lengthy. So as you deliberate as to whether you're going to re-establishment, I would say definitely money and also certainly trying to streamline the process in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Peg Borman. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Peg Borman, 17 Settlers Lane. Thank you, Madam Chairman, board members, Mr. Porter, Mr. Kinsman. I come here to talk trash. Y'all ready to talk trash with me? Okay. But I also come here with a happy face and with much jubilation tonight because I want to say we had a great spring cleanup. The statistics aren't in yet, can't tell you that. Well, I'll come back another time and talk to you about that. But we did have over 30 groups or individuals who came out and worked out through the whole month of April. We had several of the roads were picked up and we had the highways and the byways and illegal dumps were all cleaned up, at least for one day that I know of. But it all looked pretty. But now I've got an unhappy face and I don't like what I'm going to say. But some slovenly, inconsiderate people that go up and down our highways, and they make my blood pressure boil. Volunteers cleaned up one of the roads up in our part of the county, Ms. Sadler, and worked several hours that day, and it looked really nice. The next day, I went to church and drove down that road, and here was Happy Meal boxes, biscuit wrappers, all that, 20 feet from a container that it could have been gone into. The wind blew it down the road, probably 75 or 100 feet. So after church, I went back and cleaned it up. But I was going to bring the trash in and show it to you, but it stunk too bad, so I didn't bring it. But that really does bother me when, you know, there's something there they could have put it in and it would have not messed up the clean road that these people had worked a lot of hard hours on. And another incident that I had a picture, but I was in Virginia Beach and got back from a conference, didn't have time to go get that picture, that really makes me angry with this because it was a larger group that had worked on some illegal dumps down in the Grove area. And they had picked up all these bags of trash and had it all nice and stacked up to go back and get the next day. And from the evidence of the tire tracks, some truck had decided to back up over it and run over it and back up again. So these people, there was about 15 or so of them, when they got back down there, they got more bags out and they cleaned it all up again. And the mess that they had cleaned up to begin with was horrible. I'm not even going to describe it to you. But they had to clean it all up again, the second time, before it could be taken out to the dump. So that's really just not a good thing to have happen. But that was certainly a dedicated group of people and good citizens that I appreciate very much, and I hope we all do. So my plea is to you to help us to stop some of this littering and illegal dumping, because there's laws on the books. We just need them enforced. We need people out there that's willing to see something, say something. The police needs to be having us as their eyes and their ears, as well as all of you. We would like to set into motion some things, which I will be talking to you another time about, some ways to maybe catch these people. The problem is that a lot of people will see something, but they don't want to go to court to testify. So I've been talking to a lot of people about how we can minimize that effort. So I want to talk to you about that at another time, but I just want to say, everybody out there that's watching this, everybody here, see something, say something. Another thing, I know I'm running out of time, but I want kudos for the students at Norwich School for an outstanding Earth Day presentation. Their teachers, Ms. Harms, Ms. Miller, and some of the others did a great job. Thank you for the invitation. Mark, June 4 on your calendar. Thank you, Mr. McGlinnan, for coming out. One in April. June 14, 5 to 7, Veterans Park. We're going to try to have another picnic honoring Will Barnes Day. We'll be celebrating that, and we're also going to honor the adopt a spot participants. We want to invite the county, the staff, Board of Supervisors, and I'm going to still go over. Anyway, we want all the volunteers that participated in spring cleanup to come out and the adopt a spot participants, because anybody that's interested in that. Thank you for letting me talk trash.
Scott Parkinson. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Scott Parkinson, 9045 Marmont Lane. My first time ever in front of the board, so I hope I get this right. I'm not going to talk trash, but I'm probably going to talk fertilizer, and you'll get to where I'm going. So I'm not only a resident in Ware Creek Manor subdivision, I'm also one of the HOA board members. And a couple weeks ago, actually in April, the property at 8780 Croker Road was purchased. And there was a rumor floating around that the new owner wanted to place a chicken farm with about 35,000 chickens there. I actually went and talked to the homeowner on Sunday night, really nice folks. Their plan is to put 25,000 chickens on that property. It's 11 acre property. So you can imagine that nobody wants to live near or downwind from 25,000 chickens. Growing up in Indiana, my grandparents had chickens, and there was a reason they lived in the country. So the homeowners association, a lot of people, a lot getting some angst, you know, they're very concerned about the odor and the smell, the possible environmental impact, because I know that property backs up to an RPA. The HOA, Ware Creek Manor, just finished our storm water assessment and inventory, and we're dealing with that right now. And that watershed drains out into Tascanash Creek, which goes through the York River State Park and out into the York River and the Bay. Other concerns would be infrastructure support, if we have a commercial farm in this area. The roads, a lot of traffic, a lot of bikers from the park down there, boats going down there, and that Croker Road may be not be quite as pretty as Forge Road, but it's still pretty nice. Anyway, and then, of course, we're concerned about, you know, our property values going down. And so a couple questions to the board. Who has oversight for somebody that wants to do something like that? When I called the zoning office, they received no plans, but they told me it's zone A1, and I pulled that up on the chart, which allows, I guess, up to 10,000 chickens. That's still a lot of fertilizer from chickens. And what was the process for someone that would have to go through that to establish some kind of commercial business at that location? And then last but not least, as homeowners for both, I guess, woodland farms, which is directly behind that, the people associated in the Ware Creek Manor, what would be our next step to go forward to try to prevent this from happening? I don't know if that's answered here or at a different time.
I think a member of staff will probably walk over and speak with you after your comments.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Barbara Henry.
Good afternoon, Chairman Larson, members of the board, Mr. Porter, Mr. Kinsman. Barbara Henry, 141 Devon Road. Three things bringing me here this afternoon. First is the fact that the board has decided the 1% sales tax increase imposed on James City County by the governor will not be returned to us, the citizens. This money was a completely unexpected windfall of about $5 million, and our budget and the schools were amply funded. James City County residents have recently injured two tax hikes, the regional transportation tax and the real estate tax increase. Additionally, unexpected revenue was added from the personal property tax. There should be plenty of money now. You keep saying that with each additional windfall, we, the taxpayer, will be relieved of the burdens, yet you keep finding ways to spend it. There is no need for the county to keep this unexpected money, but to work within the existing budget and stay within our means. This latest windfall should be returned to the people. This is government overreach. This is government at its worst. Secondly, we have the reintroduction of the PDR, purchase and development rights, green space program looming overhead. Again, government overreach. Again, government at its worst. I adamantly oppose this scheme to use many millions of taxpayer dollars to purchase property for green space in the form of conservation easements, as determined by you, the board, is yet another form of government intrusion. Boiled down, it is the redistribution of wealth. If property owners want to sell their land, they can do it in the free market. I don't want my tax dollars being spent in this fashion. Government has no place in this. Finally, I request the recording and the posting of the board members' voting records, as is a common practice in government. Come election time, it would be nice to see at a glance who voted, which way, and for what. Thank you.
Joseph Swanenberg.
Good evening, board members. Joseph Swanenberg, 30026, The Point Drive. Apologize for my apparel, not quite appropriate, but didn't get to make it home from work this afternoon. Kind of along that same subject, I'm confused that if we're having this meeting at 5 o'clock, why all public meetings for the county are not at 5 o'clock now? Shouldn't we have that as a policy across the board then, if this is the way we want to be and it improves public participation? But anyways, why I'm here tonight is apathy. Apathy, you talk to people, and it doesn't matter here, doesn't matter where it is, in the middle of the country, left coast, right coast, wherever, doesn't matter party affiliation, no party affiliation or anything. Government is going to do what they're going to do. And it's a shame that people feel that way. Maybe I'm naive, maybe I live in illusion and come in here and hope that I can make a difference. Sometimes I feel like I do, sometimes I feel like I don't. Ran for office last year. Had signs out that greatly offended my opponent, said Hippel equals higher taxes. They were historically accurate. I didn't know how prophetically accurate they would be for right now. Not sure why we feel the need to keep this money, why it can't rightly go back to the citizens where it belongs when everything was fully satisfied prior to this. This actually, and I hate even using the term, but taxation without representation, all started down in York County because York County can't keep their fiscal house in order. Not only that, they're all but extorting us on this 911 system, and then it benefits an employee down there, it benefits family members of his for where the money goes for the radios and their service. It's disgusting, and that's why Hampton and Newport News tell them to take a hike. So we're wrapped into these taxes, and it would be nice, but people don't show up because government's going to do what government's going to do regardless of what the people say. I haven't talked to one person on the street who is in favor of this sales tax hike. Now, we may not have any choice in the sales tax hike, but we can certainly return the money to the citizens in some other forms. You know, if somebody had watched the work sessions, the last couple work sessions, and didn't know what was going on in this county, they would assume that we were in store for a real estate tax hike. And if it had not been for this sales tax, then we would have had a real estate tax hike. That's a shame. If you think about it, and you look back at those meetings, you re-watch those meetings and see what happens there, that's what it actually looks like. Already heard about PDR, green space programs. You know, we've spent, we have acquired, I should say, $25 million worth of properties. So this for the people watching this on TV in the audience, we've already acquired $25 million worth of properties in conservation easements and green space and PDRs. Those properties, not only do we pay for that, then those properties are assessed at about 10%, 10%. So we've lost, we've spent the money, and then we don't get any taxes out of the properties. That's insanity. But let's go back to Econ 101, supply and demand. If we take more properties off the market, then we get the Aspeness community because we certainly can't afford to have workforce affordable housing. we certainly can't afford to have workforce affordable housing when we're taking other properties off of the tax roll that could be potentially used. Because the less supply there is, the more the demand is and the higher the price goes. So that's something to think long and hard about while we have these committees looking into this on workforce affordable housing. So we need to be a leader and figure out new innovative, creative ways to manage our growth and be leaders in this area, in the state, in the nation, and how to accomplish that. Thank you.
Stephen Clement.
Stephen Clement, twenty-four seventy-seven Forge Road. I am the recipient of a PDR, one of the, one of the last two, and I am far from being a super wealthy person. My little twenty-four acres was bought by the county, the development rights. I could have developed, I could have put six McMansions in there and I could have made a ton of money. But my late wife and I, for years, talked about preserving land. We both grew up in the country and it was very, very important to keep places clear of development. And that was so important to both of us and it's partly my action to, you know, to honor her. But nevertheless, I went on Google Earth a couple of nights ago and you have preserved about a mile, one point four miles of Forge Road. I'm on the south side of Forge Road with all the beautiful horse farms and the white fences and so on. I have crops, I have hay, sixteen acres in cultivation. The red clover was just cut this afternoon, ready for baling and that's, and it's going to go on. But I urge you to keep this program going or reactivate it because there are places that need to be preserved. Linda has talked about driving down Forge Road and seeing these beautiful fields and farms and we are, you know, we have wild turkeys out there and we have deer, no, too many, don't even talk about deer, but, because they're consuming the crops also, which is your cash, your cash product. So just to, it's, it's very important as a county, I think, to keep looking at these properties. Now, some of them probably shouldn't have been bought. They're way out in the middle of nowhere and they don't end, they don't add a whole lot visually anyway, but they're protecting the soil and protecting erosion, protecting development. The last thing we want to do is have this place look like Denby. Pardon for Denby, but, you know, thank you very much, but I hope you will give this PDR a new life and a new consideration. I should add though, before I leave, I submitted my proposal in January of oh thirteen. Ed Orvinton and I got together a couple of times and worked out the details of what I would like to have done and have saved and what could be rebuilt and what could be adjusted. And so in a couple of months, we had, came up with a final proposal and that was in early two thousand and thirteen. Over two years passed with not a word, not an up, not a down. If, if I knew I was going to be rejected totally, I would have looked for some other, something else to do with the property. And so that, I would urge you to act on things when they come up, because it was a real, it was really concerning to me to wait and be in limbo for a couple of years, not knowing anything. Ed didn't know anything. So I, there was nowhere to go. So I urge you to move quickly on this. Thank you.
All right. With that, we're, you're going to move to presentations and a resolution of Safe Boating Week proclamation. So I'm going to come down here. Mr. Campbell, your group. Thank you for coming out. Whereas during National Safe Boating Week, the U.S. Coast Guard and its federal, state, and local safe boating partners encourage all boaters to explore and enjoy America's beautiful waters responsibly. And whereas safe boating begins with preparation, and whereas the Coast Guard estimates that human error accounts for seventy percent of all boating accidents and that life jackets could prevent more than eighty percent of all boating fatalities, through basic boating safety procedures, carrying lifesaving, emergency distress, and communications equipment, wearing life jackets, attending safe boating courses, participating in free boat safety checks, and staying sober when navigating, we can help ensure boaters on America's coastal inland and offshore waters stay safe throughout the season. And whereas National Safe Boating Week is observed, May nineteenth to the twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen, sorry, now I've lost my place. Whereas National Safe Boating Week is observed to bring attention to important lifesaving tips for recreational boaters so that they can have a safer, more fun experience out on the water throughout the year. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors of James City County, do hereby support the goals of the Safe Boating Campaign and proclaim May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen, as National Safe Boating Week. And I urge all those who boat to practice safe boating habits and wear a life jacket at all times while boating. And witness thereof, whereof, there's my hand and a seal. So I want to thank you all for coming and thank you for offering the safe boating. It's so important, especially in this area, to ensure, and I know that my daughter, I think I've talked with you and told you my teenage daughter took one of your classes. And how do people find out about some of the classes that you offer?
We try to advertise them in the.
Okay. Okay. So if people want to find out, they can find out that way and hopefully participate. But I want to thank you both for coming out and for doing this and all the things that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That, that brings us to the consent calendar, minutes, adoption, dedication of the streets, and phase two of the Marywood subdivision, Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing Vouchers.
Ms. Larson, if I can, I'll move the consent agenda. I don't necessarily want to pull one, but I would like to make a comment if I, if you don't mind.
Okay.
And it relates to the third one, which is the Veterans Housing Vouchers. This is a, our, our agenda talked about the February twenty sixteen point in time check of veterans homelessness in the area. And I've had a chance to talk to Ms. Vinrood and also have talked to Mr. Matt Leslie, who works with the Department of Veteran Services. And I was very reassured that we have a very high level of regional cooperation and in, in our area between governments as well as with the Veterans Administration and with the state government in providing some of these things. And I'm just tickle pink that we're getting these vouchers here in, in our, our immediate area. I know it looks like it's been a while and that there's still some of those folks that are supposedly not taken care of. What I've been told is there are varying degrees of different programs that some of these folks are taken care of by different programs, but this voucher program is probably one of the more important ones for the long-term folks that have difficulty. So I'm very pleased to move the agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Porter.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhahn.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to public hearings tonight. Our Planning Commission representative is Mr. Frank Polster. I believe this is Mr. Polster's first time representing the Planning Commission at a board meeting. And we first have SUP zero 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 two dash two zero one eight point two three four Peach Trees Tourist Home. And Roberta Soloff is here. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mrs. Jennifer Campbell has applied for a special use permit to allow for the operation of a tourist home at two hundred thirty-four Peach Street. The tourist home SUP will allow for a short-term rental of an existing four-bedroom home with no changes to the size or footprint of that home. The property is located outside of the primary service area. It's zoned A1, general agricultural, and is designated economic opportunity by the adopted comprehensive plan, as are most of the surrounding parcels. Staff considered the home's location, lot size, parking provisions, and screening, all to be factorable favors in the evaluation of this application. The property has an existing driveway access off a shared ingress egress easement and an existing parking area sufficient to accommodate guests. Staff is recommending conditions which are intended to mitigate the impacts of the use and preserve the residential character of the home. Such conditions include linking the SUP to a master plan, should the owners choose to expand their property in the future, limitations on the number of rooms rented, and limitation on the number of contract parties per night. Staff finds the proposal to be compatible with the twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, and surrounding development, and recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve this application, subject to the conditions included in this packet. Be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is with us tonight as well.
Questions for staff?
Ms. Soloff, if I may, I did see letters of support from neighbors. Had you received any other letters since these?
We have not received any other correspondence.
Just all in support?
Just all in support.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Polster.
Chairman, members of the board. When the Planning Commission conducted its public hearing, we heard from only one person and that was the applicant. The commission had no questions for the applicant or any comments or discussions at all. Planning Commission voted seven to zero to recommend approval to the board. Unless you have any other questions, that's it.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Your motion? Oh, oh, public hearing, hello.
[laughing].
We have the applicant. If anyone would like to have any, has any questions for the applicant, we have no other. All right. With that, we will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Motion for approval.
Thank you. Mr. Porter.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhahn.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you all. That brings us to proposed fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-four secondary six-year plan. Tammy Rosario is here.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Each year, the Virginia Department of Transportation works with the James City County Board of Supervisors to develop a list of project priorities for the updated secondary six-year plan, or the SSYP. Through the SSYP, the county receives yearly state and federal allocations to fund proposed secondary improvements. For fiscal years twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-four, the proposed SSYP allocation for James City County totals just over one point two million, with an FY eighteen allocation of two hundred forty-eight thousand one hundred sixty-three. Given the funding levels expected in the next six years and the current projects underway, staff recommends the following priorities which mirror the board's priorities for the FY eighteen through twenty-three years. The first priority proposed for the SSYP is Phase One of the Long Hill Road widening, currently underway from Route one ninety-nine to Old Town Road, Devon Road. Due to the existing safety concerns and capacity deficiencies of Long Hill Road, staff recommends keeping Phase One of the project as the first priority on the SSYP to ensure the project remains fully funded. No funding, I'm sorry. The second priority proposed for the SSYP is Croker Road. This project will widen the section of roadway between Richmond Road and the James City County Library from two to four lanes. Staff recommends keeping this project on the second priority on the SSYP to ensure that the project remains fully funded. The third and fourth priorities proposed for the SSYP are the second and third phases of the Long Hill Road widening, respectively. No funding has been allocated at this time for these projects. However, staff continues to look for quick hitter items which could be funded with immediate, with any funding opportunities. In addition, VDOT utilizes a special funding mechanism which provides annual allocations to localities for unpaved roads and bridge projects. For the unpaved road funding program, the priority project is Peach Street, which was added to the county's SSYP by the board in October twenty seventeen. For bridge funds, the priority project is Hicks Island Road Bridge. This structure has a sufficiency rating less than fifty, making it VDOT's first priority for bridge replacement on the county's secondary road system. The one-lane, sixteen-foot-wide bridge is fully funded. Staff recommends adoption of the attached resolution, which endorses the secondary road priority list as presented. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Questions? Thank you. We have to open a public hearing on that? Public hearing is open. Are there any speaker cards?
No ma'am.
Okay. We will close the public hearing. Any further discussion or?
Move the endorsement of the resolution.
Thank you. Mr. Porter.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhahn.
Aye.
Sadler.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to board considerations, FY twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget adoption and resolution of appropriation. Ms. Mellon. Good evening.
Evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. In your board packet is a memo and appropriation resolution, in addition to errata sheets that reflect all the changes that you had recommended through the work sessions. So in addition, we have detailed out all the changes, the allocations for the sales tax proceeds. The appropriation resolution reflects the changes that occurred upon the adoption of Senate Bill nine forty-two, which reflect the elimination of the sales tax on groceries. In addition to the changes to the general fund, there were changes to the capital projects fund and the tourism fund, all related to that Senate Bill nine forty-two. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And I actually have Sharon Day here as my support.
Before you get to questions, I do want to thank both you and Ms. Day and your department for all the work. I can't see her, but, oh, there she is. Okay. Sorry, Jason. But thank you for all the, the work that you've done and, Mr. Porter, you and your staff as well, so.
No questions, just comments.
Okay. All right.
Well.
Chewed it off somebody.
Can I start?
It's not, sure.
Okay. So we were told a few years ago that the tax increase was needed to help James City County with infrastructure, schools, public safety, and for increased services for growth. And subsequently, the revenues have increased each year with surpluses. I'd like to thank our staff for their proposal in the original budget this year to return the two cents in real estate taxes back to the citizens promoting a fiscally efficient government. And I thank you all for that. The windfall from SB nine forty-two is not something we asked for and returning the funds to the community, who will now be paying more in sales taxes, that returning these funds is not a question of cuts, it's a question of spending and how much you're willing to spend. Therefore, Madam Chair, I move that we amend the county administrator's current budget in this fashion to help retain our industrial tax-paying businesses. The motion is to reduce the machines tools tax by twenty-five percent from six million to four and a half million.
That's a motion?
That is a motion.
Is there a discussion about that motion? Do I have to have an acceptance of that motion or no?
No, you don't need a second.
Okay. Thank you.
I wonder, Ms. Sadler, would you explain to me the relationship between the machine and tools tax and the sales tax?
The surplus that we'd be getting back, I'm asking for a reduction.
Right. But why, why machine and tools as opposed to some other form of reduction in taxation?
Well, I, I'm planning on asking for the rest of them also because I, I feel like any of this surplus in revenue that we did not ask for should be going back to the community business and residential.
You, you, I'm, I'm still kind of puzzled as to what the relationship between the machine and tools tax and the sales taxes.
Because our industries, they all pay taxes, everybody pays.
Well, everybody pays taxes, but not sales tax necessarily.
Right. But this is an opportunity to be able to give back and I'm looking for opportunities to give back to the community.
So you'd like to reduce the?
Machine tools tax.
Machine tools tax, which has not changed in, I don't know, since I've been on the board, I don't think the rate has changed at all.
Right, and that's, that's one of my points, is this is a perfect opportunity to be able to offer some, some, some help back to show that we are open for business, we're business friendly, and in an effort just to say, hey, we appreciate you doing business here, especially like I explained early on in the process with the potential tariffs coming in with aluminum. We look at, I look at ball metal, I look at Anheuser-Busch, and this would be a way to be able to, to help with those areas.
Thank you.
I guess my question would be, it sounds from your comments that you would be proposing additional resolutions as well. Would it be beneficial to do them all and discuss them all, or do you want to do them one at a time?
Well, I, well, I would prefer to do them one at a time. That way it gives us an opportunity. If you put them all in one, in one package, it, it doesn't give you the opportunity. Maybe somebody's interested in reducing one and not the other, so it'd be just easier, I think, to separate it. So that would be my motion.
Is there a reason we're doing this now instead of the work sessions that we had to discuss this item?
Oh, I've discussed them before. It's just, I'm just moving to amend the budget.
So if we, if we do this, where are we taking the money from?
We're not taking it from, we're just not spending as much. It's a bit, it's just like I said prior, it's not a question of, I don't look at it as where we're going to cut. I'm looking at it as, in terms of how much are people willing to spend?
But then, so where are you removing it from the proposed budget?
Right, it's in the budget. You're going to have to remove it.
Well, that's something that.
Where are you proposing to remove it?
Yeah, that's what I'd like to know.
Let me get my little sheet out. That we looked at prior to looking at all this. So that boils down to 1 and 1/2 million. Well, we could start with office space needs study. I mean, we could go through a whole list of different things that we want to look at, but that's where I would, that's where I'm, that's what I'm proposing.
And that, that amounts to how much?
That one starts with 125.
125,000, so that's 10%?
Correct.
Or a little less than 10%?
Correct.
Not anymore, fine.
Well, I'm just saying, I would, that's, that's how I would like to, to cut the budget, that percentage right there.
And, and I'm not arguing with, with cutting the budget or trying to cut the budget or anything else.
Right.
But it's, it's not just cutting the budget, it's where does the budget get cut? It's always, it's very easy to sit up here and say, I want to cut the budget. But then, you also have to have a plan if you're going to do, if you're going to do 50%, you have to do the 100%. You have to have a plan in place to go, where are we cutting the budget? Are we cutting teachers? Are we cutting police? Are we cutting fire? Are we cutting the study? Are we cutting other studies? I mean, we, we still have to figure out where we're going to cut, if we're going to cut something.
And I'm not proposing cuts, I'm just looking at what we'd like to spend it on. I, I would like to give it all back. This, with, with this particular, with this coming right out of the chute, fresh off of this legislation, I feel like this year, since everything was so confusing and so contorted and so, I mean, it changed daily what we wanted to do, I mean, what was going on. My proposal is this year, give it back in relief to businesses and to citizens. After that, then we need to look at it yearly on what we want to do. But I do not feel, we did not ask for this money, and I understand some folks think this is an opportunity to be able to spend more on different things, I understand that. But quite frankly, my proposal's been all along that we need to be able to return it. So I was just looking to start off small with not spending this extra amount right here in the machines tools.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to get on board with this, and I'm going back to an email that, that was between our past county administrator and you, talking about what can we spend this money on? And now we're cutting the money. So I'm kind of confused here in the direction you're going.
I'm not cutting anything. What, when all of that, those emails took place last year, that's when all of this stuff started getting thrown around. This is the potential of what they are talking about doing. And everybody is, at that point, everybody was going, wait a minute, what in the world? And it was recommended, I believe, by our county administrator at the time, that we reduce taxes by three cents. And at that point, I'm like, just give it back. We need to return it to the citizens, so.
But that, that's not what was in that email. It was what can we spend the money on, if I remember correctly?
No, that's.
And now I'm trying to figure out, because now, now that we're down to crunch time, you want to do something different.
All right, well then, why don't I, can I withdraw that amendment, Mr. Kinsman? And, and, okay, I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to withdraw that amendment, and then I would move to go back to the county administrator's budget by reducing the real estate tax by one cent, 1.175 million. You want to just cut down to the chase from what we were down to last week before everybody decided to even bag that? I'm just, I'm just not in favor of spending this this year. I think it's, I think it's a shame that we're, that we're for, I understand that things needed to be done with tourism, however that pans out, I understand that. But I just think we're to the point where it's, you don't, it's like my daddy taught me a long time ago, you don't have to spend every nickel you get. So it, it was given to us, and I don't think we asked for it. Therefore, what we didn't ask for, I feel like we need to give back to the citizens. That's just where I am.
And let me get correct, that one penny, we put that into a fund. We haven't spent that, and we're not planning to spend that right now.
But it's not going back to the citizens, and the citizens.
Well, we haven't, we, we don't know that for sure. And we need to know, see what this plan is going to roll out, whether it's going to stay. As, as the Senator said, he, if it, if it doesn't work, he's rolling up next week.
That's right.
And he said he will end it quickly.
Absolutely, but.
That's, that's when we've got to look at, then how does that affect the citizens?
But it doesn't, but the thing is, is that we didn't ask for this to begin with, and even with our current budget, that we have ample enough to cover. We've fully funded our schools. We've got everything that we need to cover, what we need in here. And if we go back to where we were when the, the tax increase a few years ago was passed, citizens, I mean, I came away with the impression as a citizen at the time that if we started seeing surpluses in our revenues, that serious consideration was going to be given to giving reductions back to the citizens. So even with the revenues, we would still have enough to make cuts back to the citizens.
Correct, and I think we stated that in our work session, and this is something we look at again next year as well, to see where it is and how grounded this is going to be, and whether it's going to go away.
Well, that's, that's why I wanted to just give it back. And then if it doesn't work, then we can deal with it at that time. But right now, that's what we have. This is, this is where we are.
You want to, you want to vote on that right now, or do you want to continue the discussion, the budget overall? And then if somebody, we can do two motions concurrently if somebody else has a different motion?
Well, you'll need to deal with a motion that's on the floor. So I'm taking the Sadlers as a motion to adopt the most recent county administrator's budget, at least the one that returned the two cents, or reduced the real estate, reduced the real estate tax rate by two cents. So that's, that's the motion that's on the floor. So you can have a secondary motion to amend that motion, or you can vote on that motion and have a new one.
Let me, let me understand again. You're saying the two cent or the one?
One.
Because all we have left is a one.
One.
Right, okay.
Are you speaking to this motion?
Speaking to the motion.
Okay.
When we had our work session, we had this discussion at that time. And I was very much in favor of taking the one penny that we had at that proposal and returning it as a, as a tax cut back to the folks. It was clear that that was not the consent of the, the will of the board at that time. We had a good, pretty good discussion of it. And at the time, I didn't prevail in my, my position. I decided that the next best thing was to try to find out what we could do with that, and the board, I think wisely, decided to set that money aside for future construction, potential schools, school sites, things like that, that, that we're going to have need of. Having been through that once, I'm not sure where we're going with this, to be quite honest with you, because I've listened to some of the public comments. We are very constrained in what we can do. The legislature took this money from our citizens by way of sales tax. That affected people across the county. It affected our tourists that came in, but probably disproportionately, the people in our county. We did have one effort, which I think was, I applaud the board for, and that was to try to have groceries removed, because that affected the people who would be most, hurt most by it. That took a million dollars off the table, so that was essentially returned back to the people. We do not have the ability to give this money back to the people we took it from. If we're going to give it back in property tax refund, we're giving it to people who own property, not people who rent property. And I, I guess the best way to look at it would be to turn it around. If, if we were looking at a windfall of property tax, would we turn around and try to give it back to people in a reduced sales tax? Because you would be giving it back, you would be taking property tax from people who own homes and who have paid their property tax, and giving it back to people who don't own homes. So, you know, we're caught in, in that, in that dilemma, is that we just don't have the ability to, to, to put the money back where it really came from. You know, I've, I feel very comfortable that we went through a, a very rigorous process. I, I would prefer to have done, done this, but I can live with what we did on the, on the budget. And so I think really the time to have made that, that determination would have been at the work session and.
That's fine. Well, I would also say that I, I think that folks who rent, and I, I've got a lot of friends who rent, but they also have kids in schools. They also utilize our public services. And so, you know, I, I think that kind of balances out, quite frankly, but anyway.
Well, except that, that, they are consumers of services, but they are not recipients of a, of a tax reduction in the property tax, which is what you're proposing.
Right, but they're, but they're, by not paying the real estate taxes and all, they don't.
They do pay the real estate taxes, they just pay it indirectly through, through their landlord, through the property owner, who gets the benefit of any tax reduction. But I think it is important to remember a couple of things about this as well. And one is that it wasn't a million dollars that was reduced, but $2 million by virtue of taking the grocery tax away. And we recouped for the county about $412,000 as a result of the $2 head tax staying on hotels. And so while I did not support 942, I was pleased that the governor and the Senate sponsor agreed to make those changes at, at our request, because it was a fairer way to, to approach this. I think one of the things that is, is compelling to me about the benefits of putting this money aside for the potential of future needs is that, first of all, we don't know exactly how much revenue is going to be produced by this new tax increase that the state has imposed. And so if it produces less revenue than we anticipate, then it's important for us to, to be prepared for that. It also is the case that we, what we learned from this year's budget experience is the benefit of anticipating future needs. We know we're going to have future needs for school facilities, for other public facilities, for land, for other programs that people are expecting to see considered in the future. And the fact of the matter is that we were able to do as much as we did this year in part because we had been taking an active step ahead of time to put money away in our CIP that could then, when the new middle school opened up, be rolled over into operations. And that was something that really provided us with a great deal of flexibility as we came forward. And I think that that's really what we're looking at here, making a decision this year to save that money in order to be able to reduce the likelihood of needing to go back to citizens in the future. So I think that there are some good oper, some, some good reasons for us to be very cautious about, about what we do in this particular instance, and recognizing that a significant portion of the remaining sales tax collections will come from visitors to the area who will be purchasing goods during their visits here, so.
Should we vote on that motion before, and then, or then proceed with further discussion on the budget if needed?
Yes, ma'am, if that's what you'd like to do, that's, that's certainly fine.
Okay, Mr. Porter?
Ms. Heisenhau?
No.
Mr. McGlinnan?
No.
Mr. Hippel?
No.
Mr. Sadler?
Yes, aye.
Ms. Larson?
No.
Motion fails.
So we will continue, is there further discussion about the budget? Or we get a motion?
I'll be happy to, to make a motion to approve the, the resolution.
Are there any comments about, that anybody wants to make about the budget? Want to move the motion, then we'll do comments?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Right. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. First is, is the fact that this has been a very unusual, peculiar budget season because of the role SB 942 has played. It is a true reflection of the Dillon Rule. The fact that we have been asking for local authority to consider forms of revenue raising that are available to cities and not to counties is really us saying that we would like to have the flexibility to decide for our community what is the best means of raising revenue, not to have the revenue raised for us with an expectation that this is how you will use that money. We've asked for the opportunity to, to raise cigarette tax in, in the past, and have been denied that. Certainly the case that cities are expected to maintain their roads. They're also given a state appropriation for that purpose every year. And while I'm not anxious for us to take over the roads, those cities have a certain amount of flexibility and, and ability to adapt to the needs of their local communities as they make those choices. But whatever the case, 942 has been approved by the legislature and signed by the governor, and it's now up to the city of Williamsburg to determine whether or not it will go forward. But we have a budget in front of us that I think has done a lot of very good things. It has addressed the expressed needs of the superintendent of schools and virtually the entire request from the school board. It has managed to continue our process of paying down our debt. It responds to our needs for more public safety, to make sure that we have new police and fire officers who can be trained and on the streets in a reasonable period of time. It's given us lots of opportunities for us to build a stronger and better community. But make no mistake about it, there are still a lot of things that people are looking at us to do that will require us to be very careful in prioritizing as we, as we move along, figuring out what exactly we can afford to do, what we have to be able to afford to do. One of the things that is very clear to all of us is that in fully funding the school budget this year, we're not addressing all of the issues that we know were presented to us in our joint meeting. We know that Virginia, despite the fact that it is in the top rank of school, of states across the country in, in wealth, drags toward the bottom in terms of teacher pay. And that while we may be ahead of the state average, our state average falls far below the national average for teachers. And when we consider who's carrying the, the cost of schools right now, And when we consider who's carrying the cost of schools right now, we, thanks to Mr. Eisenhow, we have a report from Jay Lark that shows us a lot of this information, and it shows us that localities are paying a very high share of the cost of local education in Virginia while the state is not. State ranks among the bottom of states in the nation in terms of supporting public education. Localities rank among the top in terms of spending on public education. So we know there are going to be challenges, we know there are going to be more needs that we have to address, more desires that people will want and feel that contribute to their quality of life, and we'll have to make some of those choices as we go along. And I think this budget gives us a very clear roadmap to how we address those issues and gives us an ability to meet the basic needs and priorities of this community. So I'll be happy to support it.
Thank you. Sir?
I want to thank staff, Mr. Porter, for the process we went through. It's painful to deal with the senate bill. I do believe that it's something that we'll be working on the details of for quite a while. I do hope we get a good outcome for tourism. I'm not convinced that enough research and thought went into this to assure that that will happen. We'll have to do our very level best to make sure it does. But what I would say is, when the initial budget was put out there and I came back and asked for the ability to move those things that were continuing, recurring items into the main budget, and to keep this money for one-time items, staff was very amenable and did it very quickly and very expeditiously, and I can live with that. I think we have got things prioritized, and we were able to do a lot of things with this money on a one-time basis, especially if we aren't going to give some of it back in the way of taxes. To put it aside for schools is, I think, one of the most important things, because somewhere along the line, we're going to have to make that expenditure. And not having the ability to get offers for schools, this is probably another good alternative to provide the money for us. So I will be glad to support the budget, although, you know, there may be some things I would have disagreed with as we went through. I can live with the final product.
Thank you. I want to thank staff as well for all the work that they have put into the budget, and I also want to thank all the different department heads that came forward with the budget, because I do take to heart what was said to us at our work session, that we do have a very conservative and very efficient budget, and I want to see that continue. And looking through this budget appropriation we have, I would still like a follow-up with the tools, machine tools, information that we talked about at the work session. And I think that we do have to, at our next budget cycle, look, see what has been the reality of SB 942, to see if it was more revenue than we thought, less revenue than we thought, what does that mean moving forward? As I've tried to tell, you know, I have been, received a lot of emails, many, many more asking to put the money aside for future needs than asking to, and there was, I don't think people understood fully that at our last work session, we had, on the recommendation of staff, it had been reduced to a penny. And so I tried to explain that, also tried to explain that I don't take any amount of money lightly, any return back. I understand that everybody lives within their means, and I appreciate that. And so I think that because of that, we do owe another look-see next year, and we also owe that we not take this money and, you know, be frivolous. And I don't, there's not a plan to do that. It is a plan to work towards the future. And I think that is very important, because I think that Mr. Eisenhow and I are going to come back to you after May and tell you that, what the next school is and when it's needed, and I think it's going to be probably sooner than we expect. So, but again, I just appreciate everyone's hard work, and I appreciate the fact that we do run a very responsible government here in James City County. So is there further discussion? Any more, is there a motion?
I made the motion.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Mr. Porter?
Ms. Sadler?
No.
Mr. Eisenhow?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. With that, we move to an ordinance to amend and reordain the code of James City County by adding Appendix A fee schedule for development-related permits, and by adding a 5% fee to defray the cost incurred by the county for additional resources and technology to administrate each program. Mr. Holt?
Thank you.
Looky there, Mr. Holt.
Very much, Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening. The public hearing on this item was conducted by the board back on April the 10th. The proposed ordinance, while adding the additional fees necessary to provide direct support to administer the development-related programs in the Departments of Community Development and General Services, also increases transparency by consolidating those fee references which are currently spread throughout the county code amongst at least four separate chapters of the ordinance into one consolidated table. The revenue proposed to be generated by this budget was just included in the adopted budget. Therefore, staff recommends the Board of Supervisors adopt the ordinance included in your agenda packets. If adopted as proposed, the new fees would become effective on July 1st, which is concurrent with the start of the new fiscal year, and that would mean staff would be returning back to you in June with the housekeeping and cleanup references to delete otherwise duplicate references throughout the code. It'll all match up there effective July 1st, so. And with that, that includes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you for clearing that up for me.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Move the adoption of the resolution to amend the ordinance.
Mr. Porter?
Mr. Eisenhow?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. With that, it's a contract award firefighting turnout gear in the amount of 191,853. Chief Ash, prior to that, just want to thank you and your department for the extra, always go, the extra effort, but I know last week was quite a lot going on in a very public way, and I just very much appreciate what the fire and the police department and all of the people that support that did, and thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Before this evening, for a resolution to award a contract for firefighting turnout gear, most of our firefighters have only one set of their personal protective equipment, meaning that if that becomes soiled, contaminated, wet, or damaged on an incident, they're left either using that the rest of their shift until they can properly launder that in a machine and air dry it, or borrowing someone's set if it's out for repair. Over recent years, we've done a lot of, a lot of research has been done by the Firefighter Cancer Support Network and also the National Fire Protection Association about occupational-related cancers, specifically regarding the contaminants on our turnout gear. With most people only having that one set, they don't have that reserve to swap those out after an incident. We've implemented some of those best practices on our scene, on scene, to do some decon. We ask them to immediately shower when they get back to the station, put on fresh uniforms, but they're left with only that one set of turnout gear. So the Virginia Department of Fire Programs offers aid to locality funds that we use each year to purchase some firefighting equipment, specifically our turnout gear. And for the last four or five years, I've been purchasing Morning Pride turnout gear through Blue Ridge Rescue Suppliers, but typically the number of sets we replace in a year are to maintain our, one per firefighter, based on their 10-year replacement life expectancy. This particular contract, we do that normally through a cooperative contract, but it doesn't cross the threshold of requiring Board of Supervisors approval. So tonight, because of the number we want to set, this would be about 95 sets of turnout gear from them, it includes those that we would normally replace this year, but also to outfit all firefighters with a second set of personal protective equipment, so requires approval by the Board of Supervisors. So staff recommends adoption of resolution to use the aid to locality funds in order to award that contract. I have any questions?
Is there a motion?
Motion?
Thank you.
For the contract award?
Mr. Porter?
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhow?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Chief Ash. Contract award administration of group medical, stop-loss, and prescription drug coverage. Patrick Teague.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. So in your packet, you'll have a memorandum as well as a resolution for approval to award a contract for our group medical, stop-loss, and prescription drug coverage for members of our staff, pre-65 retirees, and extended family members under our coverage. We released a request for proposal related to our insurance carrier. We received seven responses from that, and we chose Signal Corporation as the company that had the whitest coverage at the same or better cost than we currently provide. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, is there a motion?
Move the resolution.
Thank you.
Mr. Eisenhow?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to contract award asphalt pavement repairs, seal coating, and line striping at various county facilities in the amount of 133,312.64 cents. Rich, Rick, I'm sorry, and can you tell me how to pronounce your last name?
Cale.
Cale.
Yes.
Okay, I would not, I'm glad I asked.
I know.
I wouldn't have done that.
I've been the only one. Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Porter, Mr. Kinsman. My name is Rick Cale, and I'm a Capitol Projects Coordinator for the county, and this asphalt pavement project is my project. This project will repair and provide maintenance activities to the parking and driving areas of nine sites within the county. These sites are the James City County Library, Fire Station Number Two, Fire Station Number Three, the Fire Administration Building, two parking areas within the Warhills Sports Complex, the General Services Building, and the Fleet Equipment Building at the Tuning Road Complex, and the Green Springs Trail Parking Lot. These sites were identified as being in need of essential asphalt repairs and were good candidates for service life extension through seal coating of the asphalt. Project was advertised on March 2nd, and the bids were open on April 4th. Eight qualified firms submitted bids to be considered for award. The lowest qualified, responsive, and responsible bidder was Cobb Striping Incorporated for the amount of 126,961.64. After approving Cobb Striping Incorporated as the low bidder, I met with representatives from Cobb Striping to reassess the current pavement conditions at all nine sites. The scope of work for the project increased by approximately 5% to account for the existing conditions at the sites, the new total being 133,312.64. This project is funded through the street maintenance line item of the grounds maintenance operating budget. Staff recommends approval of the attached resolution authorizing the contract award to Cobb Striping Incorporated. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Very obvious in some of these pictures, and plus I've been some of these places, that this is much needed, so appreciate that. Is there a motion?
Motion for approval.
Thank you. Mr. Porter?
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhow?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. With that, that brings us, do we want to do JCSA before we do board request and directives, or talk to you all? We'll do JCSA. There we go. Thank you.
I call to order this meeting the James City Service Authority Board of Directors. Mr. Powell, good evening.
Good evening.
Please call.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhow?
Here.
Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Sadler?
Here. And do we have any speaker cards, public comment? No? Okay. Consent calendar, minutes of adoption, let's see, do we, what do we have? Minutes of adoption.
Seven minutes.
There's several sets, but yeah.
I skipped over one.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Okay, is that a voice vote?
Voice vote.
All right, on favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right, any public hearings this evening? None?
No, ma'am.
All right, and board considerations, changes to the regulations governing utility service and resolution of appropriation for FY 19 budget. Mr. Powell?
Before you tonight are two resolutions. There is the appropriation resolution for the fiscal year 19 budget. In addition, there is the amendment to the JCSA regulations to reflect the changes in the fee structures that were proposed as part of the budget. Budget and proposed fee changes were discussed at your public hearing on April 10th and the ensuing budget work sessions, and staff recommends approval.
Okay, and we need to do these separately?
Two separate motions, yes.
All right.
I'll move the resolution on changes to the regulation, I'm sorry, to the resolution of appropriation.
And is that a roll call?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Powell?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhow?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. With that, that brings us to board request and directives.
Just a couple of quick things, members of the board. First is, I'm sorry, Mr. Iverson left, I just wanted to clarify, he made some comments earlier this evening suggesting that somehow or another 20 years ago, the car tax had been eliminated. I think that came as a surprise to most taxpayers who continue to pay those bills. He also suggested that somehow there was an inconsistency in raising issues about the existence of that car tax and my support for various kinds of policies. I would point out to him that the beneficiaries of the car tax are more likely to be more substantial for those who own more expensive automobiles. If somebody owns a $20,000 car, their car tax in James City County at 4% would be $800, and half of that would be relieved, so it would be a $400 savings. If you own a car that's worth $4,000, like I do, then your tax would be significantly lower, and the savings would be also be significantly lower. My main point there was simply that this was, again, a case of the state deciding what local taxes would be collected and how, and then building that into their budget on an annual basis, and having said that they were going to eliminate the car tax at least on the first $20,000, they actually chose to- and it will be about a year-long process to ensure that the chemistry matches the existing groundwater. If all goes well, the plan is for HRSD to begin the permit, permitting process sometime in 2019, about a year or so from now. And again, if all goes well, for construction to begin sometime in the 2020 range with the complete construction being done in 2030. So, many steps along the way. That's really the best-case scenario, but I did just want to provide you with that brief update. That's all I have.
All right, very good. Do I have a motion to adjourn until 5:00 PM, June 12th, 2018, for the regular meeting?
I'll move.
Voice vote?
Voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're out of recess now, and that brings us to board request and directives.
Just a couple of quick things, members of the Board. First is, I'm sorry, Mr. Everson left. I just wanted to clarify, he made some comments earlier this evening suggesting that somehow or another 20 years ago, the car tax had been eliminated. I think that came as a surprise to most taxpayers who continue to pay those bills. It also suggested that somehow there was an inconsistency in raising issues about the existence of that car tax and my support for various kinds of policies. I would point out to him that the beneficiaries of the car tax are more likely to be more substantial for those who own more expensive automobiles. If somebody owns a $20,000 car, their car tax in James City County at 4% would be $800, and half of that would be relieved, so it would be a $400 savings. If you own a car that's worth $4,000, like I do, then your tax would be significantly lower, and the savings would be comparable, would also be significantly lower. My main point there was simply that this was, again, a case of the state deciding what local taxes would be collected and how, and then building that into their budget on an annual basis. And having said that they were going to eliminate the car tax at least on the first $20,000, they actually chose to freeze the total amount at just under $1 billion, meaning that every year, the, the reduction in the car tax drops a little bit from the state, and it's essentially now a built-in increase in state tax, in the tax from that basis for our taxpayers. So that's just a correction to some information that I know Mr. Everson would want to hear about. Secondly, I wanted to echo the strong endorsement for the work that staff has done in putting together our budget as, in responding to our interests and concerns in that regard, and to echo the Chair's comments about the very difficult time that our public safety officers have been having in the last several weeks. They always respond to those concerns, but the challenges have been unusually difficult recently, and they have stepped right up and, and done a, done us all proud. And finally, that tomorrow night, I'm going to be participating in a town hall with Senator Monty Mason and Delegate Mike Mullen at the Abram Frink Community Center from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Any citizen who'd like to attend is welcome. They're going to be talking about what happened in the general assembly session, and I will be there to respond to any questions or issues relating to the county.
Thank you. Since the last meeting, I had the opportunity to go to a significant Habitat for Humanity ribbon-cutting ceremony where we had six ribbons cut on one event. Mr. McGlinnan was there, it's in his district, Moses Lane, but that was very impressive. I had one business opening, ribbon-cutting in Newtown. If you haven't seen, Solas Salon is right across from the American Family Fitness, right down in the end of the street next to Opus Nine. It's really a fascinating facility they put together there. Mr. David Ashem was there and took us through the facility, and so it's nice to see another one of those very large buildings on Main Street in Newtown occupied. Did the interview with WMBG, and specifically talked budget and county administrator search, and then went with several other board members to the Teacher of the Year Award that the schools held over at the Wayman Mary School of Education. It's a very impressive ceremony, some very impressive teachers we have here in this county.
Well, I have attended the Community Action Agency Board of Directors meeting. I've got an EDA meeting bright and early Thursday morning, very early Thursday morning, and looking forward to the, the LPGA events coming up within the next couple of weeks. It's going to be fascinating to see everything going on out at Kingsville. So we're looking forward to all of those things happening, and that's all I have, ma'am.
There were a few things, um, there were a couple of things brought up, PDR and what PDR does, and I was part of the group that put it on the shelf to rest while we did other things. I think it was a valuable program at that time. I think it saved a lot for our county, our citizens, and what we're, what we could grow into or what we could lose. So that, that I see support coming back for the PDR program, so that's something that, that I'll watch and, and monitor as we move forward. I, I think Mr. Swanberg got a little mistaken when he was referring to me as Hippel equals higher taxes, that, I, he knows he didn't run against Senator Norman, because that's where the tire taxes come, so maybe I'll get a chance to explain that to him and educate him on, he wasn't running against a senator, it was just me. Fire gear, I'm glad we were able to do the fire gear for the county, because that is very important if you're at 2:00 at night and you're at a fire, and you leave that and you hit another fire right behind it. And we've had several of those lately. We haven't, we've had a spell that's been very good, but I know by, you know, being in the fire department since '84, what those guys and gals do for us, and that you do need that gear. And if you put that wet gear on to go to the second fire, not only is it heavier, not only is it more hazardous, but it's harmful for the fire department and firefighters and everything else that we have out there that are protecting us. And because we have a good balanced budget, we're able to do these things. So you need to wake up on certain things and understand that without these funds, our firefighters are at risk. And who wants cancer? Nobody. You know, so we've got to make sure that our firefighters, men and women, are protected, and this is one way by doing it, by having a good balanced budget and using our funds and using the county's funds and the citizens that pay into these funds the best way we can. And that's what we're doing here, and I want that to go out loud and clear. That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I want, I attended a chiropractor ribbon-cutting in, at 4511 John Tyler Highway, and I want to bring that up specifically because that's where Farm Fresh was in Berkeley District, or right there on Route 5. And the good news is, is that, the bad news is, is that Farm Fresh went out of business, and a lot of people really liked Farm Fresh. And I, Farm Fresh by you, I think, is still operating.
It is right now.
Okay. The good news is, is that Harris Teeter is, has come in and has purchased that particular store, and they're, but they're not going to be open for a while. So we have Food Lion at Route 5 and 199, and they're re, they're redoing, but there's also, we're waiting for Publix to open. Right now, it's a little bit, there, there are opportunities, but if your, if your transportation is challenged or whatever, it's, it's getting a little challenging over in that area to, to get to a grocery store. But, like I said, there, there are people that are, that are coming in, and that's good news, and that particular shopping center by Farm Fresh, it is grown, it is starting to, to see some of the spaces taken up, so I'm glad about that. And I should add too, that Harris Teeter's pharmacy is open while under construction. You can't miss it, there's a thousand signs, but just in case you do, wanted to let people know. So, and I know that our, Amy and her department are working with the grocery stores to make sure that they're getting the information out of when they're going to open and that type of thing. Mr. Hippel and I attended the meeting of the, what, what, it was the Tourism?
42.
But, yes, because it's not, it was just the three localities. It was not everyone that is going to be on that Tourism Council. I did send you all an update about what was discussed, and there is another meeting tentatively scheduled for May 22nd, and then, but of course, we really don't, if the city does not move ahead with the repeal, then I guess we'll be, we'll be back here.
Yeah.
So, amending our budget.
And the city will take that action prior to the 22nd?
They will.
Yes.
We have it on your word.
Uh, no, you had it on their word.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Great. So, at that, this particular, the next meeting, the 22nd, will be here, and it is a public meeting. There were, there were people from the, the public that were there, and it was very preliminary. There were some things discussed, like future efforts on infrastructure between the three localities. Help me out here.
Well, left it free.
Um, and talking about what, what we hoped that the person who was hired to head this up, you know, what, what their background was like. It was tourism was the main important component that we wanted, you know, and a proven track record to increase tourism. There was also discussion on exactly how we were going to measure our return, because it's, we got to figure out how that's done. So, we have heard from a lot of people that there are a couple of communities that are like ours. Ashland, North Carolina came up, and so hopefully we'll be having some discussions with some people from there on exactly how did they, how did they measure tourism versus now, the mayor wanted me to be sure and point out that they get a lot more tax money towards their tourism than what this 942 will do, but we want to make sure that we are, we are talking with people about best practice, so.
When is that meeting again?
May, May 22nd.
What time?
8:00.
8:00.
AM?
In the morning, yes.
AM, yes.
And the?
Building D in the glass room.
The other thing we talked about was, was measurable metrics, but also making sure that whatever we were hitting and whatever we were spending the money on, that the citizens could see how that money's being spent and where it's going to, so that they understood, like what we did with the tax increase. What are you going to spend it on? We showed what we were going to spend it on, and got out ahead of everything, and told people, this is what to expect. This is how you can measure what we're doing in that group, by figuring out, okay, I know that this X amount is going to this. So the citizen, citizens can measure this group and keep us accountable as we move forward and spend this money. So that was one of the most important things, was accountability for the citizens.
And, and I can see you have a question, Supervisor McGlinnan. I was just going to just say one other thing, that there, there is not a whole lot that we are going to, we're only three of a council. So, because we are the localities that the funds are coming through, that's why we've got this preliminary, but then we're, we're going to figure out how to then get our full council seated. And, so, yes, sir.
Right, well, I think that's great that, that you're moving ahead with putting structure together and thinking about the way this will operate. I'm curious about what's, who is working on and what's happening about a transition from WADMAC to this new council. Obviously, there's going to be a period in which the question of who's paying for advertising, who's placing advertising is up in the air.
That was brought up as well. If there was discussion on whether WADMAC, you know, should we be, and, and Mr. Porter may know more than I do, there was discussion at that particular meeting about perhaps having WADMAC stay, you know, together until the end of the year, until there had been time to bring a team on, because really, when Williamsburg does this, WADMAC goes away, correct? By the?
Yes.
Right.
So, so that's a piece of it, we have to, we have to continue to, to work out, and I know.
Is that a 30 or 60-day period?
It's, it's a 30-day period, and the three CAOs and staff are meeting to, with the chamber to try to work all that out so that it's a smooth transition.
So, so that did come up. So we are working on that.
Because as, the money that comes into WADMAC is usually a lag of about two months, so if it stops now, there's still two months to come in, so we're talking about how do you make that transition?
Yes.
This won't be funded till December, once this gets into place?
It's, it's, once it gets in, then there's a, a minimum of a two-month period.
So there's still things to be worked out, obviously, but, but we have started to do that, and so, and then that, that work will continue. And then, and I don't, will there be a public comment, one at this next one? Has that been decided?
I have not, I've not heard, but we can certainly do that.
Okay.
I think they discussed that, didn't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
And Jeff is the chairman.
Yes.
Yes, he, he was the chair of our, of our last meeting, and then I guess we, at each meeting, we will move forward with the chair, just, just to run the meeting, not the Tourism Council, of our pseudo-Tourism Council meeting.
Charter orders.
There you go. With that, that brings us to the reports of the county administrator.
You have my report in the package, but I'd like to bring up that the Kingsville Championship returns to James City County. It will once again be hosted here with the Lady Professional Golf Association on the river course at Kingsville Resort, May 14th through the 20th. As part of that tournament, there'll once again be an LPGA Junior Clinic presented by James City County for children on May the 19th. Pre-registration is required, but there's no cost to participate. There's also a family fun zone on Saturday and Sunday, which is greatly enjoyed by families at this tournament in the past. Also, Family Fun Fest is scheduled for May the 19th. Parks and Recreation welcomes you and the families of all ages to the Family Fun Fest on Saturday, May 19th, from 11:00 to 4:00 at Chickahominy Riverfront Park. Addition to the Family Fun Fest is $5 a car, cash or check. Have most of the activities, once you get there, free. For information, please call 757-259-5353. In case of inclement weather, to find out about the activities, please call 757-259-3232. And they'll tell, they'll have any changes to the schedule. Also, the police will host a shred, a spread, excuse me, a shred-a-thon on May the 19th to Williamsburg James City County Courthouse at 5201 Monticello Avenue in Williamsburg. It'll be from 8:30 to 11:30. The first grocery bag of documents will be shredded at no charge, and each additional bag will be $5. Citizens are invited to bring up to 10 bags or plastic grocery bags or five file boxes of documents to be shredded. Also, at your complete, at the, so change in what you see on your agenda, we're asking you, when you complete your business tonight, to adjourn to noon, May the 15th. At that time, you will go into closed session for discussion of individual county administrator That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, I need a motion to go into closed session for the discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A 3 of the Code of Virginia, and also for the consideration of a personnel matter, the appointment of individuals to county boards and/or commissions pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A 1 of the Code of Virginia, and pertaining to the Economic Development Authority.
Don't move.
All right, Mr. Porter?
Yes, Mr. Eisenhow?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion, Chair.
All right, so we will be.
Close session, please.
Move that we certify that we only spoke about those items we indicated we would speak about in a closed session.
Thank you. Mr. Porter?
Ms. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Mr. Isonhale.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Vote call votes.
Thank you. With the motion to adjourn, we will adjourn until 12 o'clock, May 15, here at the county complex for a closed meeting. We will be an open session, though, to go into that closed meeting.
Are we going to do that meeting in the workroom?
You can be in Building D or over here. Probably over here will be the best.
Okay.
In your board work session room. Is y'all familiar with that?
This building board work session room.
Yes.
Work session.
Okay.
All right. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Mr. Porter.
Oh. Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. Isonhale.
Aye.
And Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Hi, yeah.
Yeah. With that, we're adjourned.